Yeah, looks like.
No signal.
Huh?
No signal.
No signal?
Text and I don't know.
Did you forget to pay the cable bill?
Do what?
Did you forget to pay the cable bill?
Is that where this says?
No. Yeah, no signal.
Hey Heather, can you ask him if we're ready? Alright, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the April 5th, 2021 Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Ray Solomon.
Here.
Glenn Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Here.
John Verche.
Here.
Barbara Scoler.
Here.
Claudia Gazal.
Here.
Tina Oberlin.
Present.
Martha Cordy Petrow. Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kubal.
Here. Okay, I did receive a text this afternoon from Alderman Cola DPA. Due to a prior commitment, he will be unable to be here this evening, so he is excused for this evening's meeting. Moving on with the agenda items, we have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill City Council Meeting held on March 15th, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on March 15th, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
You also have before you the minutes of the Crest Hill work session held on March 22nd, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on March 22nd, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And you also have the minutes before you of the Crest Hill work session held on Monday, March 29th, 2021. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Scoler, seconded by Alderman Verche for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on Monday, March 29th, 2021. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, as part of our business promotion for this evening, we are happy and proud to welcome to the city of Crest Hill Thompson's Beauty and Barber Shop, which is located at 1920 Plainfield Road. They've been in business for about three months now, I believe, and we have with us tonight Mr. Anthony Thompson and also his wife Patricia Thompson. So if you'd please like to come to the podium and for your business promotion of a new business in the city of Crest Hill.
How you doing, everybody?
Hi.
I'm Anthony Thompson. I'm glad to be here in the city of Crest Hill and I got a new shop and I'm very excited about my shop. And so I've been a barber for 23 years, but it's my first time I ever had my own shop. So I've been renting chairs for years, but the time was the right time to do it. A lot of people say it wasn't the right time because of COVID-19, but I thought it was the right time, the perfect time, because we need to keep our small businesses going. You know what I'm saying? People losing their businesses and some people, you know, ain't making no money and stuff like that, but I feel like this was the right time. So, and also I'm a US Army vet. I served the country and my wife worked, she served the country now. She worked for the VA Heinz Hospital right now. And so me and my wife is adventures. We work together and everything, me and her like a team. And so like I said, I'm happy to be here and I'm just trying to network my shop, my salon. It's kind of old school type barber shop I got. You know, I got the old school barber chairs and stuff, you know? And like Mrs. Scoler, her husband, Bob, cut his hair now, you know what I'm saying? He telling all his friends. So I cut everybody's hair. Every nationality, it don't matter. I cut everybody's hair. I love, I love people. I love sticking to people. Having a salon and a barber shop in the city of Crest Hill is very big because everybody in need to go somewhere to conversate about everything. You know, sports, that's one thing we do in the barber shop. We talk about sports and all the little things going on in the city because people be wanting to know what's going on in the city. So, you know, I'm like a barber and a counselor. So that's how we, you know, network people and always keep a positive attitude when people come in there because you don't know what people going through. You know what I'm saying? So like I don't know if you guys know my, I got a daughter plays at Joliet West named Lisa Thompson. She took the player year in Herald News this week. I don't know if y'all knew that. So like I said, I'm still looking for barbers to help me in the shop right now and I'm looking for ladies to do hair too. And like today, Ms. Gazel, I talked to her a couple of times in the past couple of weeks about my ventures and stuff. She said she gonna try to help me out with things and I've been on her page and everything. I appreciate it. Like I say, I'm just trying to help the community, help myself, help my family. And like I'm saying, I love doing hair. It's my passion. You know, I just wanted to help the community and things like that.
He loves so much. I think he can do it with his eyes closed. Well, I am Patricia Thompson, co-owner of Thompson Beauty Barber Salon. We're currently looking for five barbers, two cosmetologists. I prefer if the cosmetologists are licensed. We're looking for someone to do color, cutting, relaxers, braiding. Also someone that can do eyebrows. In our salon, it is, as it was specified earlier, it's about three months old. We also have a massage chair there. So while you're waiting for a haircut, you can kind of sit in the massage chair and get kind of relaxed before your haircut. We take all ages of people, children to senior ages and I know I'm leaving out something, but I'm not sure what it is.
Also, I was gonna say something. Also on Mondays, if you're a veteran, I give vets a discount. If you see your surgeon, I give you a discount on Mondays. That's something I want to do. One more thing I wanted to put out there, like the schools, the public schools in the area, I'm gonna reach out to the school and try to reach out, hope somebody can reach out to me that I know is a lot of kids can't get a haircut because parents can't afford it. It's a lot of single moms out there raising kids on their own and they struggling. I see it all the time. So a lot of time I give them a break. You know what I'm saying? So that's one thing I do and that's one thing I've been doing for years.
One last thing before we go. We're open seven days a week. There aren't too many people that are open seven days a week. Our hours are Tuesday through Saturday from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM, Sunday from 8:00 to 12:00, Monday from 8:00 to 12:00.
Okay, well, first of all, thanks to both of you for being veterans and for serving our country. Appreciate that very much. And also I want to compliment you on what you did with that space that you had. You really turned it into something really nice there. It's very well maintained. It looks good when you go by on the streets. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And you can also look us up on Facebook, Instagram and Twitter.
Twitter.
What, you can tell the Twitter address and Facebook?
Yeah, yeah. And I also got a website too.
Okay.
It's on, it's a, I don't know about hard back. I don't know the website, but you can look me up.
Yeah.
You can look it up.
Yeah, we do have a website. The phone number is 815-483-1662 and the address location is 1920 Plainfield Road, Crest Hill, Illinois.
60403.
Do you need an appointment or can you just walk in?
We do take walk-ins. We do prefer appointments, but we do take walk-ins.
Yeah, you can call me, walk in, I'd be there.
Okay.
I got my phone number on the door too, so.
All right, any comments from council?
Well, I would like to thank both of you for your service. That's admirable and my son would have appreciated having you when he was little. I was a single mother and unfortunately I cut his hair. He might have liked having a place like this, but he lived through it. So thank you. That's generous of what you're doing and thank you. We love community-minded businesses and I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
And welcome.
I appreciate it. Hey, when you were saying you cut his hair, I get that all the time. They cut a hair, make an effort. And then they come crying to me, Anthony, fix it, please.
I'll bring you a picture.
Thank you very much.
Well, you know what, Anthony and Patricia, it's really great to see you here tonight. I know we've chatted a few times and I'm so glad that you came tonight to promote your business because it's just wonderful to see the new businesses in Crest Hill succeed. And I gotta tell Bill about your massage chair. I don't think he knew that was there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But best of luck to both of you.
I appreciate it.
One important thing, I'm sorry, one important thing I forgot to specify is that we are COVID compliant. We do wear masks. Customer has to wear a mask. We wear gloves, face shields. We do disinfect, replace with COVID compliant materials.
And we check your temperature at the door.
And you get your temperature checked as well.
Wow.
So you have, you have a question?
Just going to congratulate you for moving to the city of Crest Hill.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
And I hope you have to hire more barbers.
Yeah.
And stylists.
If you look for a job, you look me up.
He said I'm too old to do any of that stuff.
No, you're not. Well, Anthony, congratulations and welcome to the city of Crest Hill. Thank you for your service. I'm glad Barb got us connected on the business group and I got to meet you in person. So good luck with all your adventure and I know you posted a picture of Bill. That was scary picture. No, it wasn't. I was like, who is this? I was like, no, it's Bill. No. I know his bill is watching me. Bill is still look good. Yeah, thank you and welcome to the city of Crest Hill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Yeah, just piggyback off of what they said. Welcome to the city and thanks for, you know, the improvements that you've made to that space and I hope you're here for a long prosperous future.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city. Glad to have you here and hopefully you're here for many years to come. You'll retire one day from here. So good luck and thanks again for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. You have a good night and wish you a long stay in the city of Crest Hill.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to the agenda, our city administrator Heather McGuire. Good evening, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have several agenda items to work through this evening. All were discussed at the March 22nd and March 29th work session a few weeks ago. The first is a resolution awarding grants under the Small Business Grant Program. This was our second round of grants for businesses. They will each be awarded $5,000 per council's direction and this are, these are to 19 of the businesses in the city and I'd be seeking approval this evening.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for a resolution awarding grants under the Small Business Grant Program. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number is 1091.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance amending Title II of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances restructuring the position of Assistant City Administrator and Human Resources Director as Human Resources Manager. For the discussion at the 29th work session, this position will be reclassified as a strictly human resources position with all the duties that typically go along with that. The appointment of that position, if approved, will be on the mayor's report this evening.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke for an ordinance amending Title II of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinances restructuring the position of Assistant City Administrator, Human Resource Director as Human Resources Manager. Questions or comments?
Yes, can I ask something about E? Does that interfere with the civil service?
No, the Human Resources Manager would just act as liaison. We still have a full civil service board as well as the commissioners that control the hiring of that list.
They still do all the hiring?
Correct.
Okay. You know, here sounded like it could be debatable.
No, as the previous person did, they just acted as liaison to that board to act as secretary, take minutes, post agendas, items like that, do all the legwork for the Civil Service Commission and then the board can focus on the actual hiring.
Okay, that's all.
Roll call please.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1859.
Thank you. The next item for consideration is the purchase approval for the 2021-2022 Vehicle Replacement Program. Per discussion at the work session, we would be requesting purchase of six vehicles. If we get into the next month and purchase those, we will have a cost savings before the contract rates go into effect for the next fiscal year. However, we will not be receiving these until we actually get into the next fiscal year.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Scoler for the replacement vehicle and equipment purchases for fiscal year 2021-2022. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Yeah, right, can I ask you something? Can we have some information about some of these vehicles when we get rid of them? Like what year are they? How many miles they out of? What you get for them and what it costs at the time they auction, all that?
When we actually go to auction on them? Yeah, when we go to auction on them, I'm happy to provide that.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item for consideration is the approval of the non-union merit increases for the 2019-2020 fiscal year and that would be per the memo that is attached to the agenda item. This would be the percentages listed in addition to the cost of living percentage.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Kubal for the 2019-2020 merit increases. Questions or comments? All this was discussed last Monday evening at the work session also. Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Uh, no, I don't like merit raises.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The remaining three agenda items are all in relation to the construction of the city center. The first is a resolution rejecting bids for the city center. This is regarding the exterior insulation and finish system. That's commonly known as EFIS. So I would be requesting approval on that this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Scoler for a resolution rejecting bids for the city center exterior insulation and finish system. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Yeah, Mayor. It actually says Public Works fencing and the ordinance.
I apologize. I will make that correction. Thank you.
Roll call please.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Motion carries. Excuse me. Resolution number 1092.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution waiving bid and authorizing execution of a proposal for Coal Construction Company at the city center. This is for installation of the exterior insulation and finishing system and this would be for the cost of $48,900.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution waiving bid and authorization execution of proposal for Coal Construction Company Incorporated at the city center. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Pardon? John, I didn't hear you. Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, okay. Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1093.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the bid award to Applied Communication Group for the city center. This is for the Detention Integrator. The Applied Communication Group was the low bidder on this project at the amount of $249,723.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Kubal for a resolution authorizing bid award to Applied Communication Group for the city center detention integrator. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1094.
Thank you. And the final agenda item I have this evening is a resolution waiving the bid for low voltage wiring at the city center and authorizing execution of a change order with Tim Electric. Per the discussion at the work session, it was much more cost-effective to have one vendor do all of the low voltage wiring. So we're requesting the authorized contractor of Tim Electric to do that work.
So moved, just presented. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal for a resolution waiving bid for low voltage wiring at the city center and authorizing execution of a change order with Tim Electric. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Resolution number is 1095.
That was the final agenda item I had this evening. The informational report is on file. We will be holding a work session next Monday, April 12th. The current topics include the final presentation for our budget with additional items still being finalized and I'd be happy to answer any other questions this evening.
Any questions of city administrator?
Heather, could you just give the viewing audience an update on the city hall property?
This current property that we are sitting on?
Are the new, the progress on the new property?
Yep, absolutely. They are finalizing the brickwork. That is the remaining item. Once we do the EFIS award, that will be installed as well and then we will finalize roofing. So we are hoping to be inside doing all the interior work beginning soon and then we are hoping to have a opening in the late fall for the city center.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Questions? Thanks, Heather. Moving on to Public Works Department, our new director of Public Works, Mark Seifer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I have no agenda items for you today, but I did want to mention something for council and the viewing audience. April is safe digging month. Every year we have safe digging month throughout the state and the country. It's really a ways of awareness for homeowners especially to call 811 or Julie before they do any landscaping, any digging, fences, pools, anything that, especially with the weather warming up now. Just a reminder to call 811 before you dig. Forty-eight hours prior, or sorry, forty-eight hours prior to a dig, you want to call Julie, let them know what you're doing, when you're doing it. They'll come out, they'll mark all the utilities. It's pretty crazy that 60% of utility strikes for landscaping and fence projects are just for failure to call in a Julie. So just wanted to get it out there. April is safe digging month. We'll have it online. We got a couple of signs to put up throughout the city just to remind homeowners and residents, call Julie. It's free for homeowners. It's no cost to you whatsoever and it's really just a safety and a protection when you're doing your home improvement projects. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Public Works?
Can you post that on Facebook?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Community Development Department, we have with us tonight Maura Wargoni. Good evening, Maura.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. There's one item. There is a memo in your packet regarding bid request. The city has requested bids from a variety of landscape companies to ensure and address those properties that are not in compliance with the weed ordinance of 7.08.03C. We did receive two bids back with the recommendation based on those bids. It is for Rapid Landscaping Inc. for the seasons weed control.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Gazal for the bid award to Rapid Landscaping and this, these are the same prices as last year and we had good results and a good relationship from last year with the same company. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
John Verche.
Yes.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I have nothing more at this time. I will be back to present a new business. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer.
Any questions for community development?
I just want to thank you for the hard work that you put into the grants. I know some people, they have like language barrier and you went out of your way to help them. So I applaud.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I appreciate that.
It's an honor to be able to help and get them through everything. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Maura.
Thank you.
Police Department, our police chief Ed Clark. Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I do not have anything on the agenda this evening, but I'd be willing to entertain any questions.
Any questions, police chief?
I have a question, but we forgot we were supposed to just to announce to the resident that we'll start our community outreach once again.
Okay.
And the first meeting we'll be doing will be June 9th at the Renaissance Park in Zauza Home off of Zauza Drive and that will be on a Wednesday. So we'll be touching more details about the time. Usually we do it between 5:00 and 6:00, I think. So we'll continue on doing that and I want to thank you for continuing accomplishing what we've talked about when you were first hired. So.
I just want to add a little bit to that. You know, some years.
June 9th.
Some years back, you know, Claudia and I decided that it would be great to do this and it's, you know, and right now it's just in war till, and of course, anyone is welcome. And we appreciate everything that you've done. We appreciate Public Works has been out there and come to the events that we've had and I just think that it's a great thing for our community and I know that Claudia will continue it on.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thanks again, chief.
Anybody else? Questions? Okay, thanks, Ed.
Thanks, Mayor.
Moving on to the mayor's report. First agenda item under the mayor's report is the appointment of Human Resource Manager. You do have information in your packet. Just to give everybody some background information, we did advertise for this position. The first round of interviews, there were five applicants that were interviewed for the first round. Those interviews were completed by Heather McGuire, Ed Clark and Ashley Motika. With that, three of the five made it to a second round of interviews that was held by Heather McGuire and myself. Last Monday night, we brought before you for consideration and also for tonight for consideration, Ms. Renee Herbst is the choice from both mayor and the city administrator and from city council as of last week. I will tell you that Renee comes before us with a lot of confidence in her interview. She also has an abundance of experience. She has 15 years of experience in human resources. The good thing is she is experienced in many different fields within the human resource field. So she will be able to hit the ground running here at the city of Crest Hill. She is, she's a local candidate, so she knows the area. She knows the businesses. I believe that her qualifications from her resume and from her interview were very impressive to myself and I believe she was very impressive to city council last Monday night as we introduced her to you also. I think she will be a tremendous asset to the city of Crest Hill. With that, I would like to ask for her appointment. In regards to the salary, the salary range for the position was offered at $60,724 to $93,846. Renee is willing to accept the position at a starting salary of $80,000 from the city of Crest Hill. All her backgrounds and her physicals all came back well. She would be willing, able to start employment with the city of Crest Hill this Thursday, April 8th. I would ask for a motion for her approval. We have a motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Verche for the approval of Renee Herbst to be hired as the city of Crest Hill Human Resource Manager. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call please.
Barbara Scoler.
Yes.
Claudia Gazal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kubal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Verche. Motion carries.
Okay, we have with us in the audience our new Human Resource Manager Renee Herbst. Renee, please feel free to come to the podium and any comments that you would like to make to the city of Crest Hill.
Well, good evening and thank you so very much for your appointment into this position. I.
I am confident in my ability to serve the city and the community very well, and I really look forward to working with you all. And tonight, I'm sorry?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, and, you know, with my mother recently passing, which was a very devastating thing, I decided to bring my sister and my niece Rita Bottomley and Elaine Bottomley to commemorate my appointment. So thank you so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome to the city. Hope you have a long career here.
Thank you very much.
We are happy to have you. You really impressed me with your interview and your application, and resume was amazing, so welcome to the city of Crest Hill.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, congratulations, Renee. We look forward to seeing you on Thursday.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is the Wimmer Rogers Duran and Ruzan audit engagement letter. This was discussed also last Monday night at the work session. This is for a one-year contract with Wimmer Rogers, Ruzan, and Duran for one year with the city of Crest Hill for this year's audit. A motion would be in order. So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Oberlin. Questions or comments in regards to the audit engagement letter? Roll call, please.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
And Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's the only two agenda items for the mayor. The only other comment that I have is that yard waste collection started actually today, April 5th, in the city of Crest Hill. It will run through the end of November, so please feel free to put out your yard waste bags or in the trash can, in the rubber cans that you can put that in, and they will pick it up on the day of your garbage collection, whatever that is. That is it from the mayor. I'll be glad to answer any questions as anyone else. Hearing none, we'll move on to city clerks' report. Vicki Hatton?
Good evening, mayor and council. I have no items on the agenda this evening. Any questions in the clerk's office, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions of city clerks. Thanks, Vic.
Thank you. Have a good night.
City treasurer's report, our treasurer Glenn Conklin. Good evening, Glenn.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'd like to report regular overtime payroll from March 1st of 2021 through March 14th in the amount of $221,361.78. Also another regular overtime payroll from the 15th of March through the 28th, 2021, in the amount of $210,819.99. The only item I seek action on is our list of bills, which I ask for your approval, and the total amount is $1,197,325.84.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Sclaire, seconded by Alderman Oberlin. Questions or comments in regards to the motion for the list of bills? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I thank you all, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions. Questions of city treasurer. Thank you. Good night. Thanks, Glenn. Unfinished business. We have nothing under unfinished business, anyone? New business? We do have a planned commission recommendation. It is case SU-21-1-3-1, the Route 52 Investment LLC, and this is for the construction of a new strip mall to be located at 1521 Cedarwood Drive. I will turn it over to our community development director, Maura Regoni, for opening comments in regards to this case.
Thank you, mayor and city council. Before you is an ordinance for a special use request for a drive-through facility. The applicant is proposing to construct a commercial building containing three tenants, two just regular retail tenants, and one a proposed future restaurant. In addition to the proposed future restaurant, they are looking for a drive-through facility specific to that restaurant. We had a peer before the plan commission in March. They received a favorable recommendation. We are still reviewing the plans in terms of landscaping, landscaping, lighting. Building is still being reviewed as well as engineering, so we asked that for one that we do condition this upon final engineering, as there are some unique things with this site due to detention and so forth, that we want to make sure that we have those addressed. We will continue to work with the applicant at that time, but I am here if there's any specific questions that you have regarding this. I also know that the architect and representative of the development here, Eric Carter, is here should there be any questions or additional information required.
Okay, let me say, this is for the property which is right across the street from the Word of Life Church. For us older ones here, it was actually the car wash that was there on top of the hill. So I would ask if anyone has any questions to Maura Regoni before I turn it over to Mr. Carter.
Well, my only question is, the drive-through will be for a restaurant and not another type of business, I mean, correct?
Right, that was the application that it was for a restaurant.
I just want to be sure because we wouldn't want it on something else, maybe.
We could go ahead and make that vision to ensure that it's a restaurant for a drive-through for a restaurant use.
Well, I just don't want it open to any use, the drive-through. I think that might be a little overreaching.
Because the, yeah, the motion was just for a drive-through facility, not specific to a restaurant, as well as the ordinance was written that way. The plans did indicate, as well as the application did indicate, for a restaurant.
Okay.
Okay. So I don't know if there's a need or a comfort level to revise that to ensure this restaurant, or I guess I would.
Well, I have to agree with Tina. You know, a lot of times we have an applicant that come forward that has a proposed use for a drive-through facility, and with this being, you know, kind of blank, it's just not common for us to see it that way. Usually there's a known tenant in that space for the drive-through use.
Correct, correct, and I think that the applicant will be able to address that. That was a topic of conversation at the plan commission meeting. They can kind of expand on that, but a lot now with going and being marketable with the current climate and wanting drive-throughs, that that is kind of this need now that everybody's looking to have one in place at this time. So if we want to make.
I don't have a problem with a restaurant. I really don't. I just, there's other businesses that might not be something we'd love to see a drive-through. That's the only question I have.
Okay, and I guess I would just ask if, city administrator, if there's been any paths that we've tied it to that, because we could go ahead and modify the motion and the ordinance to specify for a drive-through facility for a restaurant.
Right.
Okay, we'll make that change.
I have a question.
Yes.
Looking at what you have here with the plan, and for three businesses to be there who want to be in a restaurant, is there going to be enough parking spaces? This parking looks like there might not be enough.
What we did is we did specifically identify that and have conversations with the applicant. They did, the parking was break down for two retail and then the restaurant. The restaurant is relatively small on that side, that it does meet the parking based on both the retail building set as is in a restaurant. So if another restaurant were to come in, they would not have the appropriate number of parking. So as those business license come in, they did allocate it enough for one restaurant only.
Right, but I'm just looking and thinking, three businesses, then employees, and that doesn't include customer parking, it doesn't look like there'd be enough parking here.
And I can have the architect address that, because we did go back and forth in with the specifics for that and the calculations based on what the restaurant was and based on the two retail. Because they are just blanket retail, we do go with the straight retail as outlined in the ordinance as well.
That's the only concern I have is the parking, looking at this.
Well, they will have to comply with parking. We did do our first analysis in that they were meeting the ordinance based on what the square footages that they've identified as for the retail uses as well as then the restaurant.
All right. Anybody else for Maura? Okay, thanks, Maura. Eric? Eric Carter?
Carlson.
Carlson.
All right, good evening. My name is Eric Carlson. I'm with ECA Architects, and I am the architect representing the owner on the application. And I guess I'll address the parking, because that's the most recent. So, yeah, we do have the 4,000 square foot for the tenant who is the owner, and he's going to have the liquor store tenant, and then there's a space in the middle for a 2,000 square foot retail tenant, and then the restaurant component that we're asking for the special use drive-through is 2,000 square foot as an end cap, kind of similar to like a Dunkin' Donuts-type tenant. And we have no issue with the restaurant. That's the intent of the drive-through. And again, it's just to be more marketable in today's climate, drive-throughs, I do a lot of restaurant work, and we're trying to convert restaurants that don't have drive-throughs or scrambling, trying to find drive-throughs or fit drive-throughs in. So it's just, it's one of those things, as the building owner is getting ready for construction on the project, it just helps with the marketability to have that drive-through for that tenant to be able to move in right away as the building gets built. So that's kind of the reason we're doing that with an unknown tenant, but the marketing will be starting soon for all of that. But we understand that if the restaurant comes in and wants 4,000 square feet, then we have a parking issue that needs to be addressed, and that would be something that we'd have to come back and either look at variations or alternate parking solutions to deal with that issue if it comes forward. But at this point, it's planned for two retail, 6,000 square feet, plus the 2,000 square foot restaurant tenant. Any other questions that I can help answer?
No, I appreciate that. I understand the design and pre-planning and doing it ahead of time. I'm just concerned that it's only going to be for a restaurant. I don't, I mean, I don't want it to be some other type of business that would not be a desirable thing to have a drive-through for, so.
Yeah, it's definitely for that restaurant.
I'm all for planning ahead. I think that's great.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against case SU-21-2-3-1? The applicant's name is Route 52 Investments LLC. This is for the property located at 1521 Cedarwood Drive, and it is a change in zoning from B3 to B3 special use for the drive-through window. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. Second request, anyone would like to speak for or against case SU-21-2-3-1, Route 52 Investment LLC, for the property located at 1521 Cedarwood Drive, for a zoning change from B3 to B3, present zoning B3 to a zoning change of B3 special use. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Your address is optional. And a third request, anyone would like to speak for or against case SU-21-2-3-1, Route 52 Investment LLC, for the property located at 1521 Cedarwood Drive, for a zoning change of B3 to B3 special use. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium to speak for or against the case before us. You have before you, ladies and gentlemen, an ordinance granting a special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, the petition of Route 52 Investment LLC Cedarwood Commercial. Motion would be in order. Plan commission did approve.
So moved as presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of an ordinance granting special use permit to the Crest Hill zoning ordinance with respect to certain real property, petition Route 52 Investment LLC for Cedarwood Commercial. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Verche?
Yes.
Barbara Sclaire?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Joe Kubal?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance number is 1860.
What was the last number?
1860.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlson. I will say that this request is from Darpan Kilkani, correct? I will say that Darpan does own, I didn't want to say anything before the actual vote, but Darpan does own property in the city of Crest Hill. He has DK Liquors right across the street in the strip mall next to the Rose Oaks. Darpan also owns another liquor store on Route 52 in Shorewood, I believe. He has been a business owner here in the city of Crest Hill for about five years at the liquor store there. I will say, as the liquor commissioner, we have not had any incidences at that establishment since Darpan has taken over that establishment. So I would expect the same thing across the street. In the new strip mall, it'll be good to see a new building put up on that property, and it'll be a nice asset for the city of Crest Hill with the two other businesses in there also. Okay, so thank you, and tell Darpan again, everything worked out for him. I know we've been, he's been working on this for about the last two years now. And then COVID hit, and he had to slow everything down, and then he came back here in 2021, so I think it's going to be a nice strip mall there on that location. Okay, anything else under new business, anyone? Committee liaison reports. Anybody? City council comments? Positive city council comments? Anything you'd like to share with any of your constituents? We'll start with Ward 4, Alderman Albert.
Mayor, I just wanted to announce that the Crest Hill Lions Club is partnering up with the Northern Illinois Food Bank. They're hosting a mobile food pantry on Tuesday, April 20th, from 10:00 to 11:30 at the Crest Hill branch of the White Oak Library. So it's open to anybody.
What's the date?
Tuesday, April 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the Crest Hill Library. Thank you.
Alderman Kubal?
Mayor, I will just remind everyone to get out and vote tomorrow, and that's about all.
Ward 3, Alderman Oberlin?
I would also like to remind everybody to exercise their right to vote tomorrow. You go into that booth, you go in there alone, it's just you and your vote, so get out there and vote. Thank you.
Ward 2, Alderman Gazal?
Mayor and city council, I would like to announce that Calvary Church is a church that I attend to. After talking with one of my pastors about the need in the food pantry in our city, they have donated many pallets, three pallets of food, and while we're talking about the much need, there's so many people in need who decided, I'm nervous, I'm just so touched and humbled by how God works His miracles and how He connects people. So one of my pastors would decided that we're going to partner, we're going to collaborate with Aurora Food Pantry and the city of Crest Hill will be holding on May 1st. Kids pop-up pantry will be feeding 200 people, 200 families, hopefully, with the help of the council and the city. We advertised this. This is not for me, this is not for us, this is for people in need. And I'm blessed to work with an amazing pastor and amazing church. I can't thank them enough for what they're going to be doing, and this is something they're going to be doing probably twice a year in Crest Hill. So May 1st, it will be held in White Oak Library in the Crest Hill branch, and it will be from 10:00 to 12:00. It's just a pop-up. They come in, they bring their own people, they have insurance, everything, and I'm just asking everyone to spread the word and spread what God is doing in our community. It's much needed, there's so many people in need. Thank you, mayor.
Alderman Sclaire?[1714.98]